Just to those of you who don't know me, I've been in this field for almost 40 years. I started working with IRB in 1979. Ran IRB and other things at the University of Albany for 20 years. I then went to Washington and worked for the Office for Human Research Protections in Washington, which was one of the two federal regulatory agencies in this deal, the FDA. After leaving Washington, I was served as Associate Dean for Research Compliance at Waltham Memorial Medical School of Baltimore. And then for the last 12 years or so, 13 years, I've been consulting. That's a form of that, too. We formed a consulting firm, HRP Consulting Group, our director, Michelle, is leading, and we focus primarily on research compliance, helping institutions with their research compliance program, in particular human research protection. So, been there, done that. I don't know if I said everything I was going to do. Ron, can I ask you today to talk briefly, I'm not going to go into a huge amount of detail, about the provisions to the common rule. As you may know, they're fresher. There are two sets of federal regulations. There's the FDA regulations, and as of this moment, they haven't changed yet. I think they're going to bring it in accordance with these regulations. And they cover FDA-regulated research, which involves FDA-related products, drugs, medical devices, et cetera. And then there's what's called a common rule, which governs federally funded research. And so, the provisions are in the common rule. You get to see how FDA is going to deal with it. The last time the common rule, or the non-FDA regulation, that's a regulation. Last time there was any significant revision to either set of regulations was 1981. That's unfair. I'm there for now. The regulations we are currently under have been pretty much the same in place since 1981. The only significant change to that was in 1991, when the HHS regulations became the common rule, and 17 other federal agencies adopted the same set of regulations. Interesting to note that the HHS regulations were revised in 1981. At that time, there was a strong recommendation that all federal agencies adopt the same set of regulations. That only took 10 years to accomplish. If you've ever dealt with Washington, you know, no agency is going to let another agency tell them what to do. In fact, there is now one common rule. A common rule is a nickname. There are actually 18 sets of federal regulations governing federally funded human subjects research. Each agency had to adopt its own human subjects regulations, which are, for the most part, word-for-word saying the same HHS, they weren't going to adopt the HHS regulations. And it explains a little bit about how we got to where we are today. Anyway, so the common rule was adopted in 1991, with hardly any changes since then. No subsequent changes. Starting about seven or eight years ago, we became, they got a push to what they call "modernize" the common rule. And there was some merit to that, since they were 30 years old, and a lot of change in the research, the whole research enterprise has changed significantly in 30 years. The research that, the common rule was originally written to regulate, was a different, this is a different world than research. Nowadays, everybody envisioned, research was primarily done by individual investigators and individual institutions, working in their labs, doing their thing, working in hospitals, doing their thing. This idea of multi-site, collaborative, clinical trials, local clinical trials, with, you know, all kinds of modern technology, even envisioned back then. So, there was probably a need to modernize the common rule. So, the movement began, and about five years ago, they issued what's called an advance notice of proposed rulemaking. Let me give you a thumbnail sketch of how things work in Washington, for regulatory, in the regulatory area. First, an agency has to publish an advance notice of proposed rulemaking, allow a comment period on that advance notice, then they have to review the comments, then they have to issue a notice of proposed rulemaking, based, with revisions based on the comment, and respond to all the comments of the major comments they received. And how they adjusted what was in the advance notice to address the comments. They issued, so, three years after, two years after, maybe closer to three years, after the advance notice, they issued a notice of proposed rulemaking, with some significant changes from the advance notice. The advance notice changed a lot. Advance notice changed a lot, particularly in terms of how the common rule would be implemented. The notice of proposed rulemaking pulled back some from that, because, by the way, they got over 2,000 comments on the advance notice. They published the notice of proposed rulemaking, and got another 2,000 comments on that. And they reviewed all of that, and in January, they issued the final, and addressed all the comments, made changes and addressed all the comments. In summary, I would say, they put way back, even from the notice of proposed rulemaking. So, the change is not as significant a change as what was originally anticipated. And there's some areas, just personally, there's some areas I think they did a good job, other areas I don't always agree with. Well, who agrees all the time with the federal agencies? But, the final rule was issued on January 19th, which is sort of a significant date, because what happened the next day? New administration. They rushed to get this in before the new administration. The sense was that if they didn't, they would have to start over again. So, they got it out on January 19th. It was published in the Federal Register. It's a, over 100 pages. So, because they have, the preamble is most of it, and they have to address all the comments, and then what they changed, what didn't change, or how they addressed the comments. In general, the new regulations will not go into effect until January 2018. There's some talk that that might change, might shift, but we don't know that yet. The regulations state that January 2018. Except for one piece, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, the requirement was called a single IRB review. They had a requirement in there that for a multi-censored clinical trials, there'd be single IRB review. Now, that does not go into place until 2020. But that's the most significant change, and it's going to cause, I mean, the most controversial and significant, and it's going to cause the most sort of disruption to how IRBs work, that anything else in the regulations, so they gave an extra two years for us to figure out how to do this. That being said, NIH has come up with a policy on single IRB review, which takes effect sooner, now I'm blocking, I think, in September? I think it's September, but it only affects NIH on human research. And the final bullet up here, like, so, one of the things that, again, a caveat, what the new administration did when it came into office was to say that all the new regulations adopted by the previous administration were under review. We have not yet heard officially the results of that review. In fact, OHRP is hosting a workshop this week in Jersey, and that's going to be their first public discussion of the provisions, and we're sort of hoping they'll make an announcement then, that it's been approved. My assumption is that it will, because this is the kind of thing that sort of will fly under the radar, it's not very political, you know, to sort of fly under the radar of the new administration. But until we get an official word, we don't know for sure. So, that being said, let's talk, yeah, before I get there, I'm only covering the highlights. There are lots of changes. Some, many of them are just technical wording changes in order of things in the regulations, and headings, and things like that. There are lots and lots of changes. I'm only going to touch on the things that I think affect researchers and IRBs and research community more directly. I provided the Office with a chart that our, something group has done, which, nice chart that lays out all of the changes. Um, and it's bomb, okay. But I'm only going to hit the highlights. So, the first thing, and this is one of the most interesting parts of the revision, and by the way, each of these slides, I've got a number in the corner, and that's the section in the revised common rule that this was, that's. So, the, one of the most important, I think, changes, and it really gets to this point of modernization, and that's that the definition of human subject now includes biospecimens. 30 years ago, they weren't thinking about biospecimens. And so, the definition, the current definition, the old definition, by one of the languages or the terms of art they adopted is pre-2018 and post-2018. Pre-2018, which are the regulations we're working on now, I'll only talk about data. It doesn't talk about biospecimens at all. Well, biospecimens are a major part of research enterprise, and so, what they did was include biospecimens in the definition of human subjects. And it defines this definition, it adds obtaining, storing, I don't want to read this, obtaining, storing, using, studying, analyzing, or generating private identifiable information for identifiables biospecimens. Again, anything that's totally de-identified, not human subject research. We're really only talking about identifiable data and identifiable biospecimens. But this whole concept of storing them, analyzing them, the concept of repositories, registries, all of that, now is included in the definition. The definition of research, there was a test to sort of eliminate a lot of things from the definition of research. The definition of research now specifically states that certain things are not included. In the past, pre-current regulations, these things, anything that wasn't included was not included. So, it's, now we're going to specifically state that certain things are not included. Primarily, there are things like oral history, journalism, public health surveillance, some of those other criminal justice things. Yeah, the key about what they call scholarly and journalistic activities is specifically to focus on the collection and use of information that focuses directly on specific individuals about whom the information is being collected. So, the point here is, and this is sort of in keeping with what guidance you have been receiving from OHRP for 10 years, is that if you're using these methods to generate generalizable knowledge, to generate general theories, general conclusions, then it is human subject research. It's when these methodologies are used only to report about specific individuals or specific incidents. So, for example, if you are doing oral history on veterans of the Iraq War, and you're collecting their stories, and you're collecting their information, their experiences, that is oral history, and it's not included in the definition, that's not human subject research. However, if you're interviewing Iraq War veterans to draw a conclusion about the wisdom of sending National Guard units to active duty, and that's what you're focused on, and that's what your questions are about, then it's human subject research. It's not the methodology of oral history, it's what it's being used for. And I always like to make the analogy to blood draws. And a blood draw, in and of itself, is not human subjects research, if you're going to the doctor, blood bank or something, and you're getting a blood draw, that's not research. But if you're drawing blood to analyze it, to draw, answer a research question, it is. Oral history, journalism, same thing. They also broadened the definition, well, actually, this is a new definition, never did define clinical trials before. Now, they are defining a clinical trial, and they're broadening it to include behavioral clinical trials, in addition to biomedical clinical trials. It's basically this idea of groups, and control groups, and comparing groups, and interventions. Now, one of the major changes, most extensive changes in the regulations, is to broaden the list of exemptions. Remember, regulations state that if research falls in one of these categories, it's exempt from the requirements of the regulations. That does not mean it's exempt from ethical review, it does mean it's exempt from institutional policies, it's exempt from the specific requirements of the regulations. And they added, the first one is left, and we already had, educational tests and surveys as exempt, but there were educational tests and surveys that were either innocuous or Now, they added a category of identi, well, they don't specifically state, it's not as clearly written as it could be, but what I'm, the way I'm interpreting it, they've added a category of identifiable sensitive surveys, and tests. So, those will now be exempt before they were. The new, totally new, totally new thing that they've come up with is what are called benign behavioral interventions. This is psych experiments. Psychology research is done every day in the psych department. Benign, and they define that, we'll get to that slide in a minute, but they define what a benign behavioral intervention is. So, basically harmless, a harmless behavioral intervention. And the last three are about biospecimens. So, secondary research, use of identifiable biospecimens, storage of identifiable biospecimens for research purposes, and use of identifiable biospecimens that have been stored. So, the first bullet is about, you're not storing them, you're using, you're getting them from some other repository, from some registry. You're getting biospecimens from the registry, you're getting biospecimens from the repository when you're doing research on them. The next bullet is about storing them, you created, you're creating a repository. You're creating a registry. The third line is using the data that was created under the repository or registry. I think they've overcomplicated this a bit, something they needed in the last two, but... So, benign behavioral intervention, harmless and painless, not physically invasive, not likely to have any problems that we have versus, and no reason to think that the subjects would find it embarrassing, defensive, or anything like that. The one thing that's not included here is deception research. Deception research is not exempt. Unless you've got permission from the subject for them to be deceived, so they know they're going to be deceived. Now, another new, totally new thing they've added, which is called limited IRB review. As I said, that these categories of exemption, it's exempt, but require limited IRB review. So, this is the sensitive identifiable surveys, sensitive benign behavioral interventions, the storage of biospecimens, and the use of stored biospecimens. Those require limited IRB review. This is random. So, limited IRB review, requires IRB review, but it's not the general IRB review that's done for most of research. It's focused IRB review, only they focus different things for different types of research. They've overcomplicated things here a bit. So, for the surveys and the benign behavioral interventions, they're only looking at confidentiality. So, the IRB, there's an IRB review, but it only looks at confidentiality. Are the confidentiality provisions adequate? For the biospecimens, for the creating a repository, creating a repository, the requirement is that there's broad consent, and we'll talk about that, we'll later look at that, but there's broad consent for the, of storage of the data, of specimens, data specimens. For use of the identifiable specimens, limited IRB review is required confidentiality, that the research is within the scope of the broad consent. And this is an odd one, that individual results not being returned to subjects. I think the implication here is that if the individual results are being returned to subjects, it's not exempt. But it doesn't actually say that. But that's my interpretation. The thing is, is that limited IRB review can be expedited. It's not a committee doing this, it's one IRB member. It's going to be the limited review. Again, it'll only be going to focus on certain things. Continuing review, couple of changes to the continuing review requirements. First of all, and the most controversial, continuing review is no longer required for expedited research reviewed under expedited review. It's minimal risk research, it's on the list of expedited. It's also not required for the limited IRB, research reviewed under limited IRB. And continuing review is not required for approved research that's only open for data Only open for data. That was probably one of the more irritating requirements of the current regulations, was they have your continuing review, but all of it is analyzing data. So, that's changed.
Question?
Yes.
Going back to exempt research. As it looked clear to me in the guidelines, that only certain categories of exempt research or subjects are limited review.
Yes.
For example, if it's just an anonymous survey, no limited review.
Only those sort of three areas.
So, if I were to do an anonymous survey, I don't need to include the IRB after these guidelines were done?
It would be exempt.
Exempt and no limited review required.
Right. But that, no, how tensions are determined. Let me, let me address it. I'll do that, turn around the slides. The notice of approved, both the advance notice and the notice of proposed rulemaking specifically stated that no review at all is required for exemptions, that the investigator can make that determination. That was withdrawn from the current provision. So, the current provision retains the same, actually, silence on who makes that determination as the current regulation. They basically said institutions have to develop their own policy on this, and how those determinations are going to be made. That revert, it's, oh, the revert, it changes, stays the same. That nothing changed with regard to that, because they got a lot of pushback. Okay. The other major significant changes were to the consent process, with separate margins. And this is probably one of, I think, again, another area that really reflects modernization, because the consent process has taken, has gotten out of hand. And 30 to 40 page consent forms that no one in their mind can understand, the technical stuff, people are not really, senses, people aren't understanding, they're not giving true consent, and so, they made some changes. Now, just to remind you, there are two different sections in the regulations that address consent. Section 116, is the number, is about the consent process. Section 116 does not mention consent forms at all. It's about the process, it's about what information you have to provide, and how you provide that information to potential subjects. Section 117 is about the authentication of consent, and that's about consent forms. What they changed primarily is slight changes in 117, but what they changed primarily in this 160. What information has to be provided to subjects, and how that information should be provided, and it's about the consent process, not specifically the consent form, but the expectation is that the forms will follow this format, the presentation. So, the first change is subjects have to be provided with the information about the research that a reasonable person would want to have in order to make an informed decision. And it's that phrase, reasonable person, not a lawyer, not a physician, a reasonable person. What would a reasonable person want to know? Second, the process has to begin with a concise, focused presentation of this key information. Information that subjects need to know to decide whether to participate. And the information as a whole that's going to be presented to subjects should be organized and presented in a way that facilitates comprehension on the part of the subjects. Now, this all great, and it sounds great, we have no guidance yet on how to do that. And I think this is also an area where FDA, or OHRP are going to come into a little, how they're going to resolve this, because most of the problems with these 30-page consent forms come from industry-sponsored research. So, but the idea here is we're actually going to inform subjects. It's required in the regulations that you actually do inform subjects, in a way that's understandable to a reasonable person. So, there's now a standard. How we implement that standard, that still remains to be seen. And OHRP has said they're going to issue guidance on how to do this. The second point here is they've added this concept of broad consent. Broad consent for the storage, maintenance, and such related research use of identifiable private information and identifiable biospecimens. So, what is broad consent? So, the basic elements of consent, fundamental elements of consent, still have to be provided to the subjects. What are the risks, the benefits, confidentiality, voluntariness, is there going to, the parts they added are commercial profit, there's a new name, commercial profit, whole genome sequencing, those things are not explicit in the regulations, but they've always been expected to be provided. A general description about the types of research that will be conducted using the biospecimens. And so, that those phrases, general and types, and if they define that, I shouldn't look at guidance on what that means, but you don't have to say what specific studies are going to use the data of our specimens, just in general, what kinds of data, what kinds of research that we've done. Information about how they're going to be stored, how they're going to be shared. Information about how they're going to be stored, how they're going to be shared, stuff about the repository, about the registry, in the period of time they're going to be stored, could be indefinite. So, statement there, regular requirement about how long, it could be indefinite, but you have to tell the subjects, it's going to be indefinite. Information about consent for specific studies. Are you going to go back to the subjects and get their consent for specific studies? And you don't have to. So it's either yes or no. You are going to obtain consent for specific studies or every type of subjects. Do not obtain consent for specific studies. And then a statement about disclosure of results. Are you going to disclose to the subjects important results? Yes or no? And again, no requirement that you do. The only, the changes in doc, so that's about the consent information. And that's a major change, that's a significant change in the current regulations, which don't really give as much information, as much guidance as they should. So our documentation goes, and this is in section 117, they are now allowed, specifically allowing electronic signatures. The FDA has had guidance on that, regulations of that for a while. It says, now explicitly says, I think it was always a block, but it says that the consent forms may be read to the subjects who cannot read. The literate or language issues. Short forms must follow the presentation format for the long form. By the way, if you're dealing with someone who doesn't, an English speaking person, short form has to present the key information and all that stuff. And this is new, and I think one of the, it was just overlooked thirty years ago. In the waivers of documentation, the regulations on waiving documentation of consent, waiving the requirement for a written consent form, they've added it's for a distinct cultural group or community in which signed consent forms are not appropriate. It reminds me of, when I was at Cornell, got a study, and they were doing the research in the rainforest in Brazil with indigenous people in the rainforest in Brazil, and we're going to have them sign a consent form. What? But that wasn't explicitly a criteria for waiving consent. So IRB is sort of dealing with that kind of research had a problem. Now there is, it's explicit, you can't waive, the requirement is not appropriate. Okay. Any questions about, again, I've skipped the highlights, there's lots of changes, more technical changes.
So if I understand putting two slides together, identified biospecimen stuff, now they consider doing subject, but exempt from IRB review?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I had that clear, put the two slides together.
So any other questions, Mr. Paul?
Yes. So a big category of research is online research, and so obviously it's not possible in a lot of cases to get just a written copy of the consent form if the research is online. So in that case, would you just have to do a waiver?
Yes, that's always been eligible for waiver documentation. The bar for waiving documentation, the requirement right here, one, it has to be minimal risk. And secondly, it doesn't involve any procedures that don't require written consent outside of research. I mean, if you've done surveys online, every day, something comes online, you don't have to sign a consent form for that. So that's always been eligible.
Just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions about changes? Again, we got nine months to figure out how this has all been working. The, unless they change, shift a date, there's been talk since, we haven't learned that it's finally approved, it should be a year from when it's finally approved rather than a year from when it was published. So we'll see if they get into that. Any other questions? Okay, I want to address a recent article, and it was in the Chronicle of Higher Education. It said, "Long sought research to regulations upon us, don't squander the moment." Now this is, these authors argue that IRB review is so, for minimal risk research, is so burdensome and so difficult, that it has basically been a barrier to research, and that these provisions, the regulations, serve as, as they phrase it, is welcome deregulation. First of all, this is not a new discussion or argument. I said I started working at IRB in 1979. In October of 1979, I went to my first Primmer conference. Primmer is a national organization that does annual conferences on human subject protection. So in October of 1979, I went, and one of the sessions, one of the major plenary sessions, the then head of the Office for Protection of Research Risks, which Charles McCarthy, OPR became ODRP, they were drafting the 1981 regulations. And he did a set long session about what they were proposing for the new regulations. And an important part of the 1981 regulations was a broadening to social behavioral research. Previous 1974 regulations, which were interpreted as being more, much more bureaucratic. And so he said, so the regulation was off, and then he gave this whole presentation. And a faculty member from Harvard stood up at this after he'd done his question answer here, and he said, "These regulations will destroy social science research in this country." Has social science research in this country been destroyed? They've been going for almost forty years, pretty well. So this is not a new argument, and this has been, the same argument has been coming up, coming up, coming up. And so, Roxanne asked me to respond to this. Now my response is based on almost forty years' experience. Twenty of those years, those twenty years at the University of Albany, was primarily with social behavioral research. Albany is primarily a social behavioral university. We, so I reviewed, we figured out, twenty years, I would say, at Albany, I'd probably reviewed ten thousand research project models in all the areas of social and behavioral science. Just one little quirk about that experience. So you know that under extra that I review, the IRB chair can designate one IRB member to do the expedited reviews. For twenty years at Albany, it was me, I did all of the expedited review at Albany. So I reviewed lots of, you know. We had at Albany a more stringent university policy on human subjects research than the regulations even allowed. We didn't have any exemptions, didn't authorize any exemptions. And so I, and then since leaving Albany, I've been at HRP, and I've been a consultant, twelve years, and reviewed thousands of more research projects. So that's my basis. I, it's not just, by my knowledge, I've clearly been engaged in this. But I'm going to have some strong opinions, so I thought I'd share them. The most important of which, the whole focus in that article and in the ongoing discussion has been on risk. This is minimal risk research, so why should we be concerned? It's not enough, it's minimal risk, there's no reason to have IRBs, there's no reason to review this research, why are we concerned? And my point to that is, there are three, if you know the Belmont principles, there are three ethical principles governing human subjects research, risk is only one of them. Minimal risk research can deceive people, can exploit people, can take advantage of people. And I've seen minimal risk research that people getting involved in it had a completely different concept of what it was about, than they thought when they got into it, when they were deceived, where they, people, groups were taken advantage of, where the researcher was put to different uses than what they thought it was going to be put to. That classic case of that, we've read about it a lot, is the case of the Havasupai Indians. Havasupai Indians invited researchers from somewhere in the state to come there because they had a serious diabetes problem, and they drew blood samples to study the problem. Only after the research was done, they then used those samples on all kinds of other research. Spinae research, ethnographic research, all kinds of research, none of which would have been approved by the Indians who participated. So the Havasupai tribe sued, and they won. So this was a case where a group was deceived, and that there was one little line in the middle of the consent form that said that these samples might be used for other research. That wasn't true, as court ruled, that wasn't true in form of consent. They made consent to that use. And so that also is part of what led to the current issues, current provisions about biospecimens, more careful. So minimal risk research can violate people's rights, can disrespect them. And so there are ethical concerns that need to be addressed, not just risk. Second point, and I'm a psychologist, so I would say, one of the things I've learned, I've learned in my field, and I've learned in many, two to eight years of experience, no one can be totally objective about their own work. If I stand up here giving this talk, I think I'm giving a brilliant talk. I think my points are coming through, and I'm explaining myself well, but I'm not in the best position to judge that, am I? I'm a little biased here. I'm conflicted, I have a conflict of interest here. So that's why at most conferences, they ask for evaluations. You're not, right? But I'm not in the best position to judge that. And no one can be totally objective. And so, a couple of things. One I mentioned here, busy researchers, extremely busy researchers, focused on the goal of scientific research, can overlook the ethical implications of their work. They're just not evolved, but just overlook all of the implications of what they do. People are not in the best position, people who judge the risks of things that are very familiar. I mean, people here are flunked recently. What was the most dangerous part of your trip? Driving to the airport. That's where you're at risk, not in the plane. You're at risk driving to the airport. But people don't think about that, because driving is something we do every day, or in a car, we do every day. It's winding up doing every day, most of us. And so we're not evaluating our risks well. And if you, you know, and talk to people who study risk behavior, they'll confirm that. People are not good judges of risk. So my position is that every research activity needs an independent objective review. Somebody who not connected to the research has to look at it and say, yes, this is good, or no, you missed in this or that. And I think all research activities, whether it's zip, non-exempt, minimal risk, more than minimal risk, all research activities need that independent objective review, and that's what the IRB and the whole review system is designed to do. Is to give that independent objective review. Now, corollary to that is that for minimal risk research, that should be as efficient and minimally burdensome. And we ought to work toward trying to make it as minimally burdensome as possible, but that independent objective review, I think, is essential. And institution, that's not a, that's the right word, that is possible, it's not, that's not impossible. Remember I told you that the University of Albany had a more rigorous, when I was there, had a more rigorous university policy on human subjects research than what was allowed in the regulations? But I, as the director, was ordered, yes, you're going to have a more rigorous system, but you're going to make it as user friendly and minimally burdensome as possible. And we did. We worked hard at it, took effort, but we did. And we ran an IRB that imposed rigorous compliance, that had rigorous standards, that would do it in as much as possible a user friendly way. Minimally burdensome. So no one could tell me it can't be done, because we did. It can be done. It takes work, it takes effort, but it can be done. The final point, I've been in at least two debates with individuals making the arguments and authors of this article. And always bringing up anecdotes and stories of, this research was delayed for six months, and that research couldn't get done, and this student couldn't get his degree. Interestingly, when I said to one of the speakers that was anecdotal evidence, and I started talking about my forty years' experience, he called what I was doing anecdotal evidence. There probably is, but it's different actually, I think more, but it has a little more basis. But I challenged, and then each patient, the speaker, give me an example of when one of these four stories happened because of the regulations, because of what it says in the regulation. And in the years that I've been having these debates and talking to these people, no one ever has, because it's not the regulations. And almost every case that I've researched or I've explored, and we've dealt with IRBs that are burdensome, and are, there is an adversarial relationship, and they are interfering unnecessarily with research. And in every case, it's an IRB that doesn't understand how to use the regulations to effectively review minimal risk research. The reg, you know, I said a difference when you get regulations, I, I was personally opposed to these changes, most of these changes. I thought the timing were right. I thought it was fine. Didn't need any change. But the current, the current regulations and the revised regulations give enough flexibility to the IRB, enough authority to deal with appropriately with minimal risk research. It's not the regulations. And an IRB can be effective, be rigorous, rigorous compliance, be effective, and minimal risk. So that's my response to that article. I'm not criticizing them, and they're, like I said, they're a broad, they represent a broad range of field in the social sciences. So, so at this point, we're open to questions, but there can't be questions without us. I've been doing this for a while, I've seen just about everything. The one caveat, I always tell this when I talk to audiences, I will not address specific research studies. And the main reason I won't is because the devil's always in the details. So somebody will say, oh, I'm only doing such and such, how should the IRB review that? And then I find out, oh, no, they're not exactly doing that, they're doing this, and they're doing, so the devil's always in the details. I will not address specific studies at all. Any questions? Happy to address anything. Doing this a long time, and I've seen, everybody's saying I've seen everything, something good concern.
I just have a question about the last time this happened in their revisions. How smooth was the transition, in your experience?
Well, it was, actually, if you want to see difficult regulations, you should have seen the 1974 regulations. Those are the ones I had to deal with when I started with them. So it was a big step forward. So the 1974 regulations, there were no exemptions, there was no expedited review, and there were no waivers of consent. And we had to deal with that. So the 1981 regulations, certainly in the biomedical field, were welcomed, less so in the social behavioral field, but we learned that those were But we learned, those of us in the social behavioral field, learned how to adjust. But they were better for the social behavioral wealth than what it was before.
So I came in late, and you may have already addressed this, but I was just wondering, it seems that a lot of our forms will need to be revised in light of these policies. And so will you be actively involved in sort of advising us about how those forms?
We already are. And they are being advised. Two things, why return to the database system? And secondly, guess what? Coming up for accreditation again after some of the palpations in September. We've got to go over everything again for AR. And AR, by the way, AR standards are higher than their regular door standards. Talk about best practice. So, so yes, I think everything, and, and actually, today, we had a nice talk with the staff about forms and how forms can be made to work and help the investigator and help guide the investigator in that process. I'll just give you a thumbnail, my belief, or unbelief, I can see the point, that point, just hold it still. With the right forms, the forms are structured right, that provide the right guidance, the IRB should never have to ask for additional information. That's the goal. And we're going to get 100% there, but that's the goal. A good point. The IRB shouldn't have to come back and ask for more information. It's all we've got there. Any other questions?
For the exempt research that's not subject to limited review, what are you proposing, what are other universities looking at in those situations?
I think most universities are going to continue with the same practices they have. There is opportunity to rethink. I think some institutions are going to rethink. But perfectly honestly, having been to many, many, many institutions over the last several years, in most of them, it works pretty well. In most institutions, the exemption determination process, when it's done in the IRB office or comparable office, works pretty well. Fairly efficient, it's clear. Not everywhere. Recently, I had an institution that required exemptions to go to the full IRB. That was a distortion of what was intended. There are, so there's, there's an opportunity here to rethink. But this idea, go back to what I said before, about having appropriate oversight, this independent objective review is important. I personally, like I said, don't think that individual investigators should make the decision for themselves because this is not human, but not totally objective, this idea of an independent objective review. But for exemptions, it should be efficient and minimally burdensome. So it's an opportunity to think, how are we going to do that?
Yeah, I guess I'm just confused because if it's an exempt study that requires limited review, say for confidentiality purposes, and you have an exempt study that is anonymous, why should it? Do you think it requires more review or requires review for confidentiality when it's anonymous?
Okay, the, for most institutions, the exemption determination is twofold. One, is it appropriately, in one of the appropriate categories? And there are specific categories, and they're expanding the category. If it isn't, is it eligible for exemption? And two, are there other ethical concerns that should be addressed? Most cases, there aren't. But sometimes there are. There are some times issues, you did a perfect study that, oh, maybe need consent here, or maybe there are confidentiality questions. Now, so for example, you said anonymous survey. Oh, there are anonymous surveys, and there are not the surveys. What information are you gathering? Not getting their names, not getting their social security numbers, doesn't necessarily make it anonymous. The whole area of derived reidentification and how easy that's becoming is a study done, published in Science years ago, where researchers asked a hospital to give them de-identified patient information. And just using publicly available data sets, they identified every single patient. So re-derived reidentification is a real thing. Now, so it depends, what information are you collecting? How possible is it to do that? How likely is it that someone's going to want to do that? So there are things that you do need to look at, ethical concerns. Remember, risk is only one. And by the way, one other thing, and they didn't fix it except in the case of benign behavioral intervention. The term that does not appear in the list, in the exception on exemptions, is risk. It's assumed that this research is minimal risk. I've seen proposals, all my research is benign, is exempt. You look at it, okay, there's a real risk, yeah. So, but the process should be efficient and minimal burdensome.
Just the comment about exemptions as well. An institution is required to report on a yearly basis, how many studies we review as exempt status, how many studies we review as ex- exempt, as well as cohort. So OHRP, we're required to report as well as with AMR. So we have to track all of that information as well.
Also, just another point. Back when they were saying, that the NPR, I want them to say, that investigators can make the determination. I asked someone from OHRP, said, well, if an investigator, an institution, makes, states, feels that his research is exempt, and he's wrong, it shouldn't have been exempt, will you go after the institution? And she said, probably. So the institution is so responsible. So this idea of balancing oversight with ease and facility of the research, that's a challenge, but it's a challenge we can deal with.
One thing that's always confused me a bit about exempt research, and I asked this question.
I hate that word.
I think I'll be using it more now, given the expanded categories. I want to make sure I understand, is that there's some research that says exempt because it's not human subject research.
Yeah, that's not exempt.
Okay, so this is not.
Those are two different things.
Okay, so that's just not research?
Yes.
So if I'm a journalist, I don't even have to pop for exempt.
Or you're getting de-identified data.
Right, so then I don't even do an exempt thing.
Yeah, but then again, same argument goes. Who makes that determination? And so most institutions, including today, have a lower process for making that non-human subject determinations.
Okay, that really gets kind of crazy because if I'm studying cockroaches, do I have to make sure?
What we recommend is things that are clearly, obviously not human subject research. You don't submit that for a determination. Things that might be human subject research. Things that, like the de-identified data, okay, that could be human subject research depending on what information's there, could be exempt. Yeah, so where it's clearly not human subject research. Don't do it. You don't want the cockroach stuff. I will share with you a little anecdote. I was also in charge of the IACA. And the chair of the IACA was a researcher who switched from studying mammals to studying fruit flies. Cheaper and more productive, say, fruit flies. As a joke, I sent him a letter saying, you're researching fruit flies, you need to go to the end of care recently. And he called me a spurious ass. Wow, sorry. But the, but the sort of, there are things that are obviously not human subject. Then there are things that, in that gray area, that might be human subject. Naturally, as an investigator, you're better off having the office make that determination. That way, you're off the hook.
But that's not exempt research.
That's not, so it's not human subject. Exempt research is research that is human subject research. It meets the definition of human subject research, but is exempt from the specific requirements of the regulations. So it's a subtle difference. I think they blew an opportunity to make it clearer. They didn't. There are a lot of things they could have done to improve the common rule, but they didn't do. But I think that's one of, I think they could have clarified that better. So I would say, and there's always going to be gray there. Any questions? We got it all. You know, it's all clear. Thank you.
Thank you.